And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda, are there changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two. There is an addition of a personnel appointment, a part-time liquor store employee, which is in your packet as of today, I believe, and claims have also been updated to reflect a couple more bills that we're paying.
Is the appointment under the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, which those changes, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes, the minutes of the February 19, 2019 meeting were included with your packet, are there any changes to those? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Citizens input, Nina Stanley, you're here to see us, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Nina Stanley, and I am from Girl Scout Troop 16167. The reason I am here today is because of my Silver Award. The Silver Award is the highest award a Girl Scout cadet can earn. It gives me the chance to do big things and make the community better in the process. The Silver Award activity I chose was bat houses. The most common bat in this area is the little brown bat. The reason I chose bat houses was because of loss of habitat. Using correct materials such as cedarwood, it could last up to eight years. When bats live here in this community, bats eat up to 6,000 to 8,000 bugs a night. So that keeps the bat population up and insect population down. Depending on the layout and materials used to build a bat house, it can cost from $10 to $20 to make. My plan is to build five bat houses. I am here to ask for you, for your help in finding locations within the community to place bat houses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about my project.
Yes, if there was.
Sorry, your dad's right. So you're looking for recommendations on where to put them, is that what I understand? So are we thinking city property, is that the idea here?
Yeah, so this will actually be our second bat project that we've sponsored at the city level. I think we did one last year as well. We could easily find a place for five more homes. They're fun projects and we're proud to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can work with Nick and the staff and you'll coordinate?
Yeah.
Make sure she's successful?
Absolutely.
I have a question, how high do the bat houses have to be off the ground?
Um, that I'm not sure of yet.
I just didn't, flying.
We were gonna put one on your unit at Condris.
Lot 25, right?
All right, well, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is one project. I think you probably know how to contact City Hall. Well, good luck. All right, is there any other citizen input, Chris, I'm assuming you're here for something?
It's Anna.
I'm assuming you're here for the contract discussion. All right, item app, council committee reports, we have a parks, the planning commission.
Will be a very... Were very supportive. They both have small children, they were excited. Both of them lived within town here. And if any of the citizens, if anybody has any curiosity of what the plan is gonna look like within bands, end of week maybe? The design boards will be at Howard Lake Liquor Store, Howard Lake Foods, City Hall, and?
Bank.
And the bank.
Also be on our website.
Yep.
So these are the concept plans, the same ones that you had at the expo?
Correct. Yep.
Did anyone ask about the splash pad and its size relative to buffaloes or delugans?
The one guy that I did talk to asked about, you know, what are the features? It's too early to tell, it's gonna, it's not gonna be large feature. But he asked about a pool, and so we had a brief conversation about what, you know, possibly what the yearly maintenance alone on a pool could be. But yeah, we also had good conversation about, you know, this is a good starting point for us, for a community of this size, to keep people here. So it was positive conversation.
Any add?
No, I think just to articulate slightly, the planning and parks commission did approve the concept plan at their meeting. And right now, the phase that we're in is actively seeking comment and feedback from the public. So to Jason's point, to Jean's point, we will have the actual storyboards with the images up around town, they'll be online. Reach out to city staff, reach out to city council, ask questions, provide feedback. Our first go at it was the business expo this last weekend, and I think by and large, comments were very positive, very supportive. In fact, I think only one or two people asked, like, why we're not doing more. It wasn't, why are you doing anything, it was, why aren't you doing more? Which is almost refreshing in a way, so.
I would like to add that during, you know, during the committee meeting, or the commission meeting, Vern Cleve, you know, his take on a project of like this is, let's get it done all in one fair swoop, you know, one swoop altogether, not phases, phase one, phase two, phase three. But, you know, the amount of burden, the additional burden that might be placed on the taxpayer in order to do a project like this all at one time, might be a lot to ask, it might be a big ask to the public. So I think it's worthwhile, once the dollars, once we know what the dollars are gonna be to do the project all as one, then we can also do an outreach and see, can we get any buy-in, any support on that?
I did have somebody this weekend ask me if we were open to accepting donations, like park benches, that kind of thing, so I said probably.
Yes. I mean, yeah, I can address that, so we actually have some general guidelines and standards for donations into our park system. So the short answer is yes, but they do need to meet like a minimum, like grading quality, so that we know they'll be sustainable in our system.
Good to know.
I think the only other thing that, when we talked about in the meeting was, you know, when are the streets projects due? And how can we align that with having this project done? Because you'd hate to do, let's say you do the park, right? You do it, it's done, and all of a sudden you gotta come through and do a street project, and now you have maybe some restoration that has to take place because you have to change stuff. So we have to be mindful of that, too.
Yeah, that's a good point. Any other councilor committee reports? Jason and I have a wastewater commission meeting on Thursday. All right, item G, department reports, Howard Lake Wine and Spirits, year-to-date financials, were these in our packet?
They're not, they were actually not prepared, it was a holdover.
So we're just passing that over?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda, we have four items on the consent agenda for consideration. Accepting all reports of payment of claims, approval of the 2019 summer rec agreement with HLWW, consider approval of various personnel appointments. Did you add one personnel appointment to those personnel appointments?
No, it's included within those materials.
Okay, got it. So it's just those three?
Yep.
So there's no discussion on those, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, where are we, presentations, public hearings, and related approvals, item A, consider in a report of public works department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The report before you tonight is really just a high-level overview of some of the varied activities that our Public Works Department was involved in in 2018. We have three full-time staff as well as a seasonal employee that makes up our department. And they're responsible for maintaining our utilities, streets, facilities, equipment, and parks. So three and a fourth in the summer to do all of that. And they're usually the department that are called on frequently for help assisting other departments, working on other special projects. So we're trying to kind of encapsulate all the regular duties as well as the other duties as assigned that they frequently engage in. So first, we'll kind of touch on some of the utility information, beginning with water. We pump water from two wells through our water treatment system, and then it's distributed to the rest of the city. And in 2018, the water treatment plant distributed about 72 and a half million gallons of water. And this is actually an increase of about 12 million gallons, or about a 20% increase from 2017. We can almost completely attribute this increase in water use directly to Forsman Farms. As you can see in our graph labeled residential versus non-residential water use. Residential use has been fairly consistent the last few years, but in 2017 and 2018, non-residential water use has nearly doubled. So we know Forsman Farms kind of started using city water about halfway through 2017, a full year in 2018. So that's really what we're noticing in terms of the trend in water use. Some other related water maintenance, we completed the semi-annual hydrant flushing as well as began a multi-year project to repaint all the fire hydrants in town. As for sewer, Public Works does a lot of regular maintenance, including annual jetting as well as lift station pump and control maintenance. In 2018, our wastewater collection system pumped about 84 and a half million gallons of wastewater, which is an increase of about 7 million gallons, or about a 10% increase from 2017. So pretty consistent with about what our water use increase has been, is also reflected in wastewater.
But still over the amount of water we pump.
Right, yep.
If I'm reading this right, is that our INI is like 12 million gallons?
Yeah, but I believe, looking at it, I didn't have enough time before this to do a full INI estimation, but it's less than it was last year, so that's a good sign that we're continuing to see improvements, and it's not as high as it was last year.
All this snowmelt, that'll change things.
Yeah, that could be. In terms of stormwater, we maintain a lot of different components, including ponds, curb and gutter, and catch basins. And so some of those maintenance activities include street sweeping to prevent, you know, the buildup of leaves that get caught in our storm drains, as well as clearing our storm drains and catch basins of snow and ice, and repairing curb and gutters as needed. A little bit about some of our street maintenance activity. Overall, our entire street maintenance comprises snow removal, sidewalk maintenance, pavement repair, pothole patching, sign management, curb and gutter repair, and street sweeping. So a lot goes into maintaining our streets. We shoveled about 16,000 pounds of asphalt for pothole repair in 2018, which is an increase of about 3,000 pounds. And from what I can tell from staff, a lot of that is in a few areas of town. One in between Munson's and Joe's Sport Shop, because that's high vehicle traffic, especially with some ice, so that road takes a beating as well as we know. Haywood and the Dutch Lake area as well has used a lot of pothole patching.
About 75% of that is now in the storm sewer.
Yeah.
It's probably gonna be worse this year.
It probably will be, they, I know Tim was out even yesterday, and maybe even towards the end of the week or beginning of next week, already patching potholes that have come up, now that we can see it with the snowmelt, so. Something else that was exciting that we completed in 2018 was the city council approved a seal coat project for 7th Street and 13th Avenue. This was kind of the first attempt at seal coating following a seal coat schedule as part of a capital improvement plan. So you'll expect to see this, you know, every year following. So that was an exciting project. Another project that was completed in 2018 was repainting all the crosswalks as well as installing updated street signs. So you can kind of see the first picture in the middle there are old street signs, they're much smaller. The font is not retro-reflective, so it's required that we update to retro-reflective street signs, they're easier to read, you can see them better at night. So about half the city's already transitioned to these new street signs, and the rest will be completed this spring.
That was a state mandate, right?
It's a state mandate to have a plan?
Right, that's what I was just thinking.
It was a weird deal, but we're doing it.
A mandate to have a plan and how to identify if they could be read by elderly or some...
A relatively easy feat for our city, we replace signs with most street projects anyway, and we're small.
Right.
But if you think of a large metropolis, like an actual metropolis city, it's a daunting deal.
Yep. The next area we can talk about is parks. So the city of Howard Lake has about 21 acres of parkland, and that includes nine community, neighborhood, and passive parks. And some of the main forms of maintenance that they perform is just general mowing and weed control. But they also maintain park bathrooms and park shelters, they rake and weed the beach, they clean and repair play equipment, do some general landscaping, and maintain all docks and fishing piers. And in 2018, staff developed some standard operating procedures for park maintenance because we were continuing to hear from the community as well as from the council about, you know, we need to be more proactive about maintaining our parks. And so some notable changes that happened in 2018 include replacing all the mulch that's in our playground areas, deep cleaning all playground equipment, and planting four donated trees from the Kiddock family in Dutch Lake Park. And one of our most complained about forms of maintenance, which I think transitioned into one of our top compliments in terms of maintenance, was related to Lions Park Beach. So in the summer, the city purchased a landscape rake that can be used with our tractor that can clear the entire beach in 20 minutes, which is a big deal, because before this, if we wanted a clean beach, it took three guys almost a full day just to weed and rake everything, all of that to say that, you know, the next time a strong wind comes, it can completely change it again. So having a piece of equipment that can be used so efficiently, that makes such a big difference. I mean, the before and after is really compelling about how effective this piece of equipment is. So we're excited to have that around for the full summer in 2019. Some other park projects that were completed with the help of a new seasonal employee, Bridgette Stanley. She helped us really tackle a lot of projects that just got put on the back burner for years. It was like, well, it's important, we'll get to it, but there was just so much to do that it never seemed to happen. So some of those included, she repainted almost every single picnic table in the city. She cleared out weeds and debris from the 5th Avenue tennis courts and from Yeager Field. And again, the before and after is pretty compelling, she spent days out there, and it made a huge difference to that area. It made it so much more welcoming and pleasant. And we are excited to have her again for this summer, at the beginning of the summer. So we'll continue to improve the quality and the maintenance of all our parks for our residents to enjoy.
And you'd be surprised how noticeable that, you know, it seems like little stuff, but people really do notice it.
Yeah. So as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, Public Works is really called on to tackle a lot of other projects for other departments and help out with city celebrations, things like Good Neighbor Days, the farmer's market, cleanup day. You know, those community events need a lot of support, and Public Works is usually on board to make sure those go off without a hitch. But a more unique one that happened in 2018 was that they completed most of the pre-demolition work for the historic City Hall project. So it's kind of hard to tell from these pictures, but they ripped down the hanging ceiling, they cleaned out a lot of the bathroom fixtures. To get that out of the way, they took down portable heaters that were installed in the ceiling. They hauled out, I mean, this room was full of storage of old junk and furniture, and they cleared all of that out. So that way, when contractors got on site, it was ready to go. So that saved the city thousands of dollars, and, you know, it was just like awesome to have their help do that. Another unique thing that they were involved in was document clear-out. So in our basement, we had about 7,700 pounds worth of paper that needed to be shredded, so they helped us go through it. They brought it all upstairs so it could be shredded. And same with, we had a lot of old and aged equipment that was from PAC 10 years ago that wasn't being used. Things that just kind of accumulate in the basement of City Hall, and they brought it all up and did a really deep clean of the basement so that way we could start organizing down there, and they took care of it at cleanup day, so that was super helpful. And a final note, we wanted to give a special shout-out to Tom Getford, who retired from the city in August of 2018. And I think it's pretty rare that you find people who retire after being somewhere for 30 years. And months and months later, we keep finding things that we're like, you know, who is doing that? Who is taking care of that? I didn't even realize it, and it always comes back to, well, Tom always did that. And, you know, it's those like little subtle things that he paid attention to, that he cared about, that, you know, make us miss him. You know, and the difference that he made in our community. And it's hard anytime we deal with a retirement, but a retirement from someone who's been there for 30 years, I mean, that's just hard to come back from. So we're still adjusting, but we're really grateful, too, to have someone who is continuously available if there's questions of, you know, how did you used to do that, we can't figure this out? Or, as you know, with the record-breaking snows we had, and employees who were out sick, Tom was willing to jump back in the snowplow and help us take care of clearing snow. So we're so appreciative of his years of service and his continued service to the city. So just wanted to give a special shout-out to him.
Council, any questions? Do we need a motion to accept this report, or is that included?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good job, Aurora, thank you for that.
That was good.
Item B, are we having a public hearing, or are we considering a public hearing?
We are having a public hearing.
Okay, so we're gonna close the regular meeting, open the public hearings. My magic wand, this is the public hearing. All right, public hearing regarding the proposed utility billing ordinance updates.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor and Council. Following an audit that we did of all utility billing accounts at the end of 2018, staff identified some inconsistencies. We noticed that some accounts were not being charged fees that matched our approved utility rate schedule. So while that wasn't true for very many, it was only about 5% of accounts. It ended up being about 40 accounts of about our 800 utility accounts here. It was primarily only affected multifamily properties and commercial properties. So what we've discovered was that in some instances, there was a cap rate on sewer. So after you use a certain amount of gallons, it wouldn't charge anymore. Or even more goofy, in some cases, the volume charge for water and sewer was set slightly too high or slightly too low. And across the board, base rates were not being applied consistently. So that showed us, okay, we need to really look at everything and fix it, clean it up. So in order to do that, we read through our ordinance and said that to clean up our billing practices, to make sure that when everyone looks at their bill, they know that they're being charged the same as everyone else, and that they look at their bill and they can understand it. That's what we want for everyone who has a utility account with us. But in order to do that, we also, it's appropriate to update our utility fee ordinance to make sure that our practices, our billing practices match what's in the city ordinance. So in a couple of cases, our ordinance was just out of date, its practices we've always had, they just don't match. For instance, we have an average volume charge for sewer that's, we determine on your sewer average for residential properties in the first three months of the year and use that for the entire year. That wasn't even written in our ordinance, but it has been our practice. So it was like, well, if we're updating it, this is the time to make that correction, so it's clear. Same with, we didn't really have a clear policy or formula for how base rates are charged. That was what, we effectively had one when we were looking at it, but again, it wasn't defined anywhere, it wasn't clear. So to make sure that we're setting up all new accounts, and anytime we look back at accounts that they're set up consistently, we need to make this update in our ordinance. Same with, as we found out at the certification this last year, there was some confusion about, well, you know, what the thresholds should be for sending a delinquent account for collection. And someone says we are following the 60-day and the $300 balance, if either of those could trigger it. Because we know that it can only take a couple of months, or maybe only one month, to reach a $300 fee, we don't want to institute a minimum dollar amount, we want to go by billing months that are behind. So we're proposing to just follow the 60-day delinquent accounts would be eligible for certification.
So is there, you know, we had an issue a little bit with tenant-owner situations. Does this ordinance address that at all, or we really can't write that in there, I suppose?
So we discussed that specifically with the city attorney, and there's a cop handle privately, but we just want to make sure that we're very clear on who is legally responsible for the bill, and when do they become legally responsible for it?
So nothing with the shut-off?
No, so, but we did add for the shut-off procedures, I mean, it's something we've been doing anyway, but property owners as well as renters always receive copies of shut-off notices, late notices, and as well as notices of assessment. Everyone's included on those.
Two per year assessment, I think this would be two.
Oh, right, as well as we are looking at, that's a good point, Nick, transitioning to a twice-per-year assessment. And the idea with that is instead of having it be that if somebody just misses the threshold, they have an entire year to potentially rack up a balance. Setting that immediate action needed earlier in the year can maybe prevent some of the issues that renters had in some of the properties, so.
In looking at that in terms of the calendar year and how we enforce this ordinance, really, we do not shut off any water service during the winter. We follow the cold weather rule, even though we don't necessarily have to, we follow that because it's just general courtesy, frankly. So the first opportunity for shut-off would happen in April or May, and we're proposing twice-per-year shut-offs, which would come in June. So in terms of just enforcing of our own policy, where we ran into the issue with the renter-owner issue there, they would have far more, like a sooner opportunity to go to assessments, which would trigger that landlord to be engaged with their property or their tenant themselves. So we think that would just de facto help that situation as well.
So you said shut-offs twice a year, but, so are the shut-off notices coordinated with the assessment notices?
Correct.
And does the assessment process require a special public hearing, or are we just planning on doing that on a regular basis?
Assessments do require a public hearing, and we do follow that.
Yep. And only a few other minor changes I'll point out. We have been having quite a few issues regarding meter readings. Specifically, not receiving meter readings for like six months or more at a time. And this especially becomes an issue if we haven't received meter readings, the house is sold, it goes to the next account holder, and it's been estimated, and then how do we handle credits because it's a new owner? So it just creates a big mess if we don't get regular meter readings. Our current ordinance says that if we don't get meter readings, we can install a remote meter reader, which we don't have that technology, so we're proposing to delete that from our ordinance because we can't even do that. And second, it says that we can enter your property at any time, which we cannot. I mean, we can ask permission to do that and then charge you.
Well, the ordinance says we can.
Right, so, so because we can't do that, we're, I mean, we're still keeping it that we may request permission and charge you if we go into your property and read it, but what we're proposing is that if it's gone three billing cycles without receiving a meter read, that the no meter read fee would be increased after you reach after three months. We don't have a proposed fee set for that, we could talk about that another time. This is just a concept that we might allow that, to encourage people who serially do not provide any meter readings, that we have to have meter readings to bill you.
So the fee isn't determined by the ordinance, it's just by our fee structure?
Right, when it comes time to actually enact that, we would pass a resolution establishing that fee, but we would need to have something in the ordinance allowing us to do that, recognizing that we would do it. So that's kind of an overview of some of the changes. Again, the track changes document was included as well as a clean version, because sometimes it's hard to read with so many track changes on there. But something that is separate from this ordinance that I want you to kind of be aware of is, for all of the accounts that we referenced above, that would be affected by these inconsistent billing practices, we are in the process of sending letters to each of those properties, so that way they're aware of, hey, your bill might look different. Or we also have looked at their bill and had a, this is your existing bill, this is what we estimate would happen in the end. So that way people have an idea of what's coming to them.
Yeah, if I could jump in on that just a little bit.
So wait, hold on a second, so you have sent the letters, or you're working on sending letters?
We're working on sending the letters, they'll go out tomorrow.
Yep, so top-down, there's about 800 utility accounts within Howard Lake. The proposed changes that we're discussing tonight impacts about 40 of them, in terms of dollar-to-dollar what they're paying. We think that the changes that we're making are fair and equitable so that we can say that their base units are the equivalent of so many homes, similar to a residential equivalency. And so far, knock on wood, at least as we're reaching out to these high-impacted users, the high-water users that you'd anticipate, that are probably rolling around in your head, the discussions are going okay. I think they understand the rationale behind it, and I think they appreciate our efforts to make it a transparent... to make it a transparent process moving forward, even if they don't like the higher bill or what have you. Fortunately, in many instances, what we're finding is, one representative or one business has multiple accounts, and one account is going up a little bit, another one is going down, and another one is staying exactly the same. And, to us, that's proof of concept that what we're doing is right. Because if 95% of our utility accounts are being billed fairly and equitably, and we're trying to get to 100%, and some of them are going up, some of them are going down, that just stands to reason that the changes that we're bringing forward are the right changes. But, again, the bigger takeaway, because a lot of residential folks are watching and will read about this in the newspaper, this is not impacting rates whatsoever. Even for the commercial properties, this is not impacting rates. Every January, the city council passes your fees and charges, we're actually trying to get all of our utility accounts on that fees and charges schedule. And, I think we're well on our way. A couple of things that are not explicitly addressed, and I think we're gonna hear more feedback from the public, and we'd like feedback from the council. This does not explicitly address payment plans. What constitutes a payment plan, what you need to do to stay in good standing in terms of an account, so that you're not assessed. Some of that stuff still needs to be flushed out, and I think we will bring back some recommendations at the April meeting, which is the second reading for this. It's also the meeting where we have deliberately invited the high-impacted users to come to the council meeting as well.
So, dumb question, why are we having two readings of this ordinance?
The typical process for, like, actually enacting an ordinance involves two readings and a publication. We're just trying to be a little bit more rigor with how we adopt our ordinances. Especially with this one, there's no surprise, we've heard for years that we have high utility rates. We want to do the best job as we can to be methodical and give folks an opportunity to understand what's in front of them and to be heard with you before we move forward.
So, this really, though, will kind of affect people's sewer charges as well, right? Because they're...
Only a few of the accounts, again, this was only in place for a few commercial and multifamily accounts. The only ones who would notice differences to their sewer charge are ones that are currently being billed either too low or too high of a rate, or ones that have the sewer cap. That is only on a handful of accounts, but those would be corrected as part of this process. To give you an idea, jumping ahead a little bit on kind of the timeline for fully implementing this, again, this is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. Tonight, we're holding the first reading of this ordinance. In April, we'll hold the second public hearing, as well as publish the summary of the ordinance in the paper, so that way, people who either attend the meeting or don't attend the meeting are aware of what changes are gonna happen. Those changes would go into effect just before the May billing. Following the May billing, we will actually institute all the changes in people's accounts. So, then, the first time that people would notice any changes to their accounts wouldn't be until the June bill is released. So, that kind of maps out how this would actually go into effect. So, we're still a few months out from actual implementation.
June bill, May usage, right?
Yep.
Counsel, public, any questions?
Looks like you've done a lot of work.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah. We're really grateful that we had a few members of the public who asked questions, who kind of prompted this audit, as well as we're grateful to have, you know, our utility billing staff and our accountant really helped pull the materials together, because it's a lot to go through 800 accounts and check on all this stuff. But, I mean, clearly, it was worth doing because we want to make sure everybody's being billed equitably. So, it'll be a good change.
So, do you have a plan, then, to do it periodically going forward? I mean, obviously, you kind of have a better process maybe in place for making sure new accounts are set up properly, but...
And, I think something that made it difficult to do this audit, kind of on the backend of our system, we had a lot of rates, with only a few accounts using some, or some not being used at all. And, so, that made it even more difficult to at a glance recognize that we had rates set up incorrectly. So, we've already begun the process to get rid of rates that are left over and aren't being used. And then, once we clean it up, hopefully, it'll be really easy to notice that we can see all the rates in our system really clearly.
Okay. And, with the commercial accounts, especially the ones that are being impacted, we will review their usage annually, similar to what we do with all of our accounts for sewer estimations. For example, we've heard from a few utility account holders that are implementing conservation methods. That's great, like, that's part of why we want to do this as well. So, if they have a big decrease in their water consumption, their bill would reflect that the following year as well.
Right. So, I think we can close the public hearing, reopen the regular meeting, and we are at new business, item A, consider approving the first reading of the ordinance amending the city code chapter 10.01, which we just discussed at our public hearing. So, if there are no questions from the council, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consider approval of lease for Memorial Park between the Orphans baseball and the Howard Lake.
Yes, tonight, we have Mr. Chris Bickman with the Howard Lake Orphans with us tonight. He can answer any questions or make any comments. But, we are pleased to bring forward this draft agreement that we've been working on for about the last year or so, relating to the use of Memorial Park for the Orphans baseball team. I'll give a quick...
The first of its kind, really, here in Howard Lake.
For Howard Lake, absolutely. We did basically kind of piece together and borrow our neighboring cities with town teams to kind of collectively draft this lease. We're starting with the disclaimer that we don't anticipate this to be perfect, it's kind of a work in progress. But, ultimately, it's a huge first step for us with the city and the Orphans overall to formalize that agreement moving forward. And, honestly, Chris, it's been fun. Like, I know it sounds weird to say, like, making an agreement's been fun, but it's been a really enjoyable process working with you guys, so I appreciate that. The highlights of the agreement itself, the Orphans will be considered exclusive users for the dates that they submit to us. So, they will get the, basically, top priority, the use of the field, what have you, as they have for the years past, they are that exclusive user. They need to provide us a tournament schedule and a practice schedule and that sort of thing, so that we know that the field is theirs, but it's theirs for the use of baseball and so forth. We've agreed to a $2,500 annual lease, which is based on $500 per month for a typical season. As we've said from day one, this isn't necessarily about the monetary exchange. As a city, we have expenses and so forth, we want to, like, at least address them to the best of our ability. But, again, in general, the revenue that we receive will really be put back into the field itself, which is something that the Orphans have been doing forever. And, we don't see that...
Not the field, the park.
Yeah, yep. Good catch, thank you.
How far in advance are those, the dates normally?
We have a draft schedule as of last week.
For?
For 2019.
For 2019.
That's actually a firm league schedule. There'll be a few adding games here and there, exhibition games.
So, if somebody comes and asks about a date in, you know, November of 2018, and they say, "I want a date," and it winds up smack dab in the middle of what they're doing, but you don't have their schedule, what do you tell the person that wants to use it? You have to wait till we have their schedule because they have priority?
For the most part, yes.
But, the other thing you got to keep in mind on that, too, is during the course of the season, on those scheduled dates, we do have a lot of rain-out makeup-type games. So, we have to have that flexibility to be able to fit in a game. And, we've got a deadline to get our league games in within that season, because they have to all be played before tournaments begin.
So, what happens in the event that somebody has something scheduled, but then they need to use it for a rain-out?
We've had, like...
I'm just saying, this might never happen, but what if?
I think it has happened.
It has happened, yeah. That's where I was kind of going with this. And, fortunately, either the secondary user or the Orphans themselves are pretty good at negotiating schedule on the fly. It's pretty rare to have other users on a consistent basis. We actually had a secondary user approach us recently, which took us almost entirely flat-footed, like a unknown commodity style.
Okay.
And, we do communicate back and forth very well, as to if we are looking at a makeup-type game and seeing, making sure that, and we will reschedule accordingly as well, too, with the city.
So, I think kind of holistically, the biggest advantages of moving forward with this agreement, one, we understand the days and the uses of the field. The second is it really defines roles and responsibilities moving forward, and we try to kind of delineate those to game-day activities versus support activities of the park and the facility itself, and it's broken down accordingly. Again, the city, to start with, pay for and provide service of water, sewer, garbage, electric utilities. We save basically the exterior envelope of the press box, concession stands, pavilions. The Orphans themselves have a lot of, like, equipment on the inside, that's their responsibility. We would clean paint and stock supplies for the bathrooms, mow the grass in the surrounding of the baseball area. We'd mow the field during the offseason and provide winterization activities in the bathroom, concession stand, that sort of thing. We do have an annual service agreement related to the sprinkler system, that's not anything new. And, of course, annual inspections of the seating area sidewalks and trails for the field itself. The Orphans, they would prepare their field for game-day activities, including striping, chalk, lawn fertilization. They would mow the grass during the duration of the game and tournament schedule. They would sweep and maintain the seating area following events, and just the general maintenance and upkeep of baseball-centric activities. Again, I think this is somewhat of a flexible work in progress. You might see this back in front of you in a few months if we need to make changes, but at least at this point, we feel it's a pretty decent understanding of what each group is responsible for. And, mind you, the big thing that it addresses in terms of maintenance and capital improvements, it's asking the Orphans to come to the city with anything above $500 in advance of actually seeking that approval or going forward with it itself. So, that helps us plan and respond a little bit more timely and accordingly, to make sure that it's within our budget and our capital plan. And likewise, we're asking the Orphans for a long-term improvement plan as well as part of this agreement.
Those above $500 purchases are just approved at the staff level, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
What's that again?
I just wanted to make sure they weren't gonna make you come to us every time you want to spend more than $500.
Oh, right, and once, you know, spring finally arrives and everything settles out down there, there's a lot of unknowns that you have from winter to winter, just because of the high-water table and the frost levels and things getting pushed out there, fencing, scoreboards, things like that. So, you really don't know until you're about ready to start the season what you're in for.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
The two big capital items that we have collectively on our radar for 2019, it's really the seating area. There were some maintenance issues that we were surprised with last year. So, we're gonna do a better job of looking at the overall seating area. The second is the scoreboard itself, the wiring to support the scoreboard may have to be adjusted, like Chris said, with frost footings or something of the sort. Those are intentionally void within this agreement. There's too many unknowns, to Chris's point, where we want to identify and quantify them before we either obligate or speak up for who's responsible, what that cost split would look like.
And, this contract's gonna be reviewed annually and renewed annually?
Yes.
And, the $2,300 will go into specific improvements for the park, correct? Because, like you said, we've already been spending everything there, so it's not reimbursing us for expenses we're budgeting for, so...
Chris, anything to add?
I think it's a good start here, and it's getting on the same page, working together and doing the right things.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. Counsel?
Good.
Anything else?
You.
Alright, well, we will entertain a motion, then.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Good luck, hopefully your season starts on time.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. We're scheduled to start May 4th down there, so...
It could happen.
Yeah. It's one of the first, yeah, our first game of the year. But, well, I think we're gonna try to get some exhibitions over there all in the world for those, so...
Oh.
A lot of dry all. So, do you want the signed right away, or...
I'll reach out to you, I'll remove draft and that kind of thing to clean it up, so...
Say.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, if we have a clean one, we can just hand it over. Thank you, Chris.
Talk amongst yourselves?
Yeah.
The ball fields down to the school, though, for sure, how long it's gonna be before the day, oh my gosh, with the water problem, with all that snow.
I don't know, he'll start practicing. He's gonna play that AAU basketball, too, this summer.
Hi, guys, thanks.
Hi, guys, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we didn't want to...
See, you guys have signatures down there.
Cole likes his basketball, that's his sport. He's gonna play summer baseball, too, yeah, I know.
19.
Great, we'll send you a copy.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
See ya.
Thanks, Chris. Alrighty, item C in our new business, consider approval of temporary 3-2 beer license for the Howard Lake Orphans. We should have been saying...
Yeah, nothing new here with the proposed liquor license. This is something that the Orphans get annually, we approve it, it's mainly clerical. I do have two items that I want some feedback on. One is the liquor license fee, we've actually never charged them, and to be fair and equitable across the rest of our groups, we should charge them something, even if it's 50 bucks. And, the second is put in the provision to ensure that their staff receives age training, which is just good sense.
That's a really good idea.
Yep.
So, how will you hold them to that, though?
We can hold their liquor license until we see the certifications from the county. And, it's a pretty painless training.
I mean, are you gonna make them have all of their staff trained, or, you know, because they're volunteers and they probably don't know...
We can talk about that. Talking to Chris just through the formation of this agreement, they really only have a handful of people that work the concession stand game after game. So, where you see a lot of cities play into this is to make sure that at least one of the people on staff at a game has that, and I think that's something that they can accommodate.
Yeah, that's reasonable. I mean, I just want it to become kind of a hassle for them, you know?
Right. And, the training itself is a couple hours and 20 bucks, I think, so, I mean, it's not an overburden. And, they may even do it already, I don't know, we've never seen that level of information from them.
So, do you want us to kind of itemize this fee piece of this, or...
Yeah, I think that would be a good place to start, provide even a motion to a fee. It is set by council, so that's perfectly within your authority. And then, the second motion would simply to be approving the liquor license contingent upon the staff training.
What do we normally charge, like...
Yeah, what is it?
That would be my question.
Good neighbor days, last year, as you recall, we did, we actually sponsored the beer vending ourselves. Prior to that, we did not charge them either. So, this is kind of getting everyone to fall in line. But, where we've heard static is actually from our existing liquor license holders, that there's a place to get liquor that did not pay for a liquor license.
Right, that's fair, I mean, that's a valid argument.
This is the annual liquor, what is it, 200? What is it, 32?
For 32? Is it? Yeah, I think it's 200.
It's 200 a year? So...
They're only using it for, I guess I would kind of prorate it, maybe.
Right, good point.
Yeah, because they're only using it for five months, six months, or whatever.
Prorate it for the time that they're...
Yeah. That seems appropriate.
I mean, even 50, I mean, only you're doing it once. I mean, it's not like they're doing it every day for, I mean, or every weekend or whatever.
To me, in terms of, like, and saying we're doing the right thing, it's not about the dollar mark, 50 or 100 bucks is perfect, they're not gonna have any concerns with it, so...
And, I kind of feel like, too, it's, I mean, they're a nonprofit, you know, it's kind of, I mean, it's not unusual... I kind of feel like, too, it's, I mean, they're a nonprofit, you know, it's kind of, I mean, it's not unusual to have a different set of fees for that type of organization.
So it'd be $16 a month or 16, 60 a month. Times, what do they use it? Four months?
Five months, yeah.
Maybe good.
Maybe five.
So, I mean, I'm fine with $50. I mean.
I mean, I'm not interested in the rate.
Right, and they're only, they're only how many days a week? It's not like it's 70.
I'm okay with 50.
So let's then entertain a motion. Can we just do it all in one, approve the liquor license with a fee of $50?
Sure.
Contingent upon them completing some type of, some level of?
Verification.
Yeah, training. Who would like to make that motion now that they're just eloquently? Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, consider approval of change orders one, two, and three for the historic area hall renovation project.
Yes.
Normally, I, normally I see change order and I just kind of cringe, but this one?
I think you'll be mostly okay with it. So what I did, I put together a PowerPoint that should be on the screen in front of you. I thought I would take this time to give a general update to where we're at with the project. And ultimately, I am asking for council approval of two change orders, which are included before you. But I would also like to solicit your feedback to a few more that I anticipate to percolate forward in the coming weeks. So just kind of stepping back, we're in an okay place, I think, with the project overall. Admittedly, to the general contractor, where we've lost about six to eight weeks due to just a pretty terrible winter that they were up against. That being said, they quote-unquote are going gangbusters moving forward. And I think that's pretty relevant, even with the visual activity that you see on site this week. I think at the time that we were starting this meeting, the roofing team was still on the roof. So I mean, they're, they're going very aggressively moving forward. They're pouring footings for an elevator tomorrow. They're, they're jumping in big moving forward.
It's really happening.
Yeah. So at this point, the demolition work, as you know, is largely completed. And in terms of project phasing, that's a logical time to kind of step back and realize where we're at with things overall. So it's not unheard of. It's not really atypical to be considering change orders at this point now that the building's open and there's a general understanding of where we're at and where the project is going, which I think is especially true with renovation projects. New build is pretty straightforward. There's typically not a lot of surprises. But when you're talking about ripping apart a 115-year-old building, we knew walking into this, there would be at least a couple of those things. And I think the good news to report, by and large, the things that we're up against are not terrible monsters. They're things that we want to address to make it a good worthwhile project. But a lot of the big important things, like our footings, our HVAC system, the quality of the roof and trusses, it's a really good, solid building for being 115 years old. And the stuff that we're considering tonight, they're not that kind of core critical things. They're things that we want to consider to make a good project, but they're not the costly demons that we could have at this stage. I am saying that optimistically. I do see like a second phase of this where it typically comes with these projects, where they're more owner-driven, where you may have a set of finishes in front of you that do not meet your liking and you want to upgrade or downgrade. And those are just, again, natural course of a project of this type that come closer to the completion of the project. Kind of a funny example of that, actually, that I love with this project. When the original city council approved the construction of this building, they allocated $10,000 to build the building. And then about a month before they opened the doors, they came back to the city council for $500 for furniture. $500 in 1904 is the equivalent of $15,000 today. So I mean, they, they understood that this sort of thing happens that long ago. It was kind of a fun deal. Again, in terms of where we're at, the roof is in progress, the shakes are going up, and I think it looks really pretty impressive. The second floor bathrooms are framed, the sprinkler system is roughed in throughout the building. And as I noted, tomorrow, the elevator is going to be poured, like the actual footings for the elevator. So the first change order that we're looking to discuss tonight concerns the actual archway in the second floor. The project scope, what we approved in the bid spec itself was simply to patch the framing, patch the sheet rock, and call it a day. Once we started ripping apart the plaster, we realized that that is really the structural integrity of the lath. Once you take off the lath, the overall arch is just done. So this change order essentially rebuilds the entire archway brand-new. This would have a cost impact of about $6,300, which includes design, labor, materials, and project administration. Again, of the two change orders we're discussing tonight, this is the first. And I think maybe the best way of taking this, do you have any questions, comments on this before we move on? It seems relatively straightforward.
I just have one question. So we're replacing the arch for the historical and aesthetic value of the arch, right? I mean, just so that's clear, it's not that it's a functional.
Not load-bearing.
What's that?
Not load-bearing.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's important, but it is what I would consider like central to the original building itself.
Right.
Where we had to seek approval and go through the grind of working with the historical society, this arch was very well-known, articulated that it needs to remain in the project. So while it's aesthetic and doesn't necessarily serve a building function, it does serve one in terms of historical integrity of the project.
Good point.
The next one, change order number two, is moving the elevator mechanical system. I included a picture in front of you that's actually the former pull-tab booth for the bar. The original plans and what were included in the bid specs were to put all of the elevator mechanicals inside this room. The proposed change order for $4,000 takes the elevator mechanical items and puts them in the elevator shaft itself. And honestly, this is something that saved a few pennies in terms of the brick and mortar of the elevator shaft. So there was actually a small cost savings there. And to preserve function and space in this room is actually really important to the overall function of the first floor. We see this being a kind of quasi-break room for staff that does not exist otherwise for like the liquor store currently.
Does that create a maintenance or any safety issues because now you're moving the mechanicals into the shaft itself?
No, in fact, in terms of maintenance, they like having everything encapsulated there and not accessible otherwise.
So whose idea was it in the first place to have the mechanicals in, outside of where they would normally want it? Was it theirs or?
I think this is more of architect versus field interpretation, where an architect designs something, but once you start working on site, it just makes sense to make changes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't necessarily see that being a bad thing. Any questions about this one? Again, these are the two that I'm seeking approval for tonight, so a total of about $10,000 coming from the contingency. The rest of these are kind of in queue and being considered. So we're, I really appreciate greater feedback from you guys is the rest because I think there's more interpretation, more insight to provide.
So now that that won't be a mechanical room for the elevator, does that sort of change the plan for the first floor?
Not much, no. But what it does change currently, the staff break room and work area for the managers, because as we know, we're doing the co-op thing with Buffalo, is all within 60 square feet, which is incredibly cramped. Having this room, which would likely be a second workstation for, for managers or even staff to do price changes, as well as just a place to warm up food or drop off your jacket, what have you, is pretty important because right now it happens in Myra's office or in the storeroom and back. It's just not, not functional.
It just makes sense, too, if down the road 20 years, we no longer have the liquor portion.
Right.
It's a functional room for offices or whatever you need it for.
Right.
So do you want us to take these two change orders right now before we move on to the other stuff?
Sure. I think that's fine.
Get them out of the way?
Yeah.
So, so again, this space is, this dual-purpose space for them is going to be for managers. It's going to be for break. It's going to be for people to drop off their jackets and all other stuff. There's no security issues that we need to address with that or?
I mean, we'll lock the actual door, but right now it's going to be more secure than right, like what makes me uncomfortable, our safe and all of our records are kept in the manager's room, which is also where employees come in and out of all the time.
Which is?
Separating those two out, we're actually going to be increasing safety and security for the.
So you'll still be able to use that 60 square feet for that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No.
Makes sense.
Okay. So do you want these as two separate motions?
They should be, yes.
Well, let's entertain the first motion for change order one, which was.
The arch.
The, oh yes, the arch. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll circle it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the second change order, which was the elevator mechanicals, moving them to the elevator shaft rather than that office space, I guess. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, the next one that we're currently seeking prices for is to remove the vestibule on the first floor. The plans that we have adopted and in place through the bid specs just simply involve keeping these three walls that you see in place intact. Doing so is fine. Again, that's included in our current plans. But what we have discovered is it's quite disruptive to the overall setup and flow of the first floor. So by removing these walls, we'll be able to greatly kind of frankly merchandise and use that space appropriately where we, we'll struggle with it under this current setup. So we would ask for the walls to be demoed. There is some wiring that would need to be changed. I don't have a speculative guess as to how much this costs, but it is coming down the pike in terms of identifying the cost and bringing it forward to you folks.
Can those doors be reused somewhere else?
Potentially. That is one thing that they're considering. You may recall that the first floor involves like a mall security gate that blocks off kind of the bathroom and the elevator function area. Part of the change order that they're trying to quantify is moving one of those doors and abandoning the gate idea. They're not certain that that would save any money and it would also kind of close off that space that we wanted to keep open during normal function of the liquor store. But we're at least entertaining that as part of this change order.
So my only concern is taking that down, the timing of it, and then, I mean, you kind of have to then do something with that space and the off-sale because now you're open, you know, there's no way to close it off in the interim.
I think that's a great question. So that was part of our discussion point with the contractor as well. They could do one of two things. First, they see the overall like movements that are required on the first floor to go like a hurricane because they don't want to disrupt the liquor store. We tried to be as agreeable with the overall project, how long it took, what they could do and so forth. But the marching orders that we gave with the liquor store was to be as like the least disruptive as possible, and they understood that. So if this were to move forward, they would build a temporary wall that would be basically the same size and function of what you see as the vestibule, but would come down when we're ready to do the overall first floor merchandise.
And then I would assume that would still be, I mean, that still has to be the handicap entrance.
The handicap entrance, once the project itself is complete, we will hope that folks use the east entrance on that parking lot. But this, in the meantime, will still be the designated handicap entrance. Any strong feelings one way or another? I know it's hard with.
I mean, I think it kind of makes sense, you know, the sightline really is kind of bad. I mean, it gives them more options for maybe even where to have a cash register and.
I'm trying to think of other places where I see that one-way traffic. I think it was Delano's Liquor Store next to Coburn's or wherever you walked in. You couldn't go that way, you had to go that way. And then you go around and exit out.
Yeah. I just hope they can use those doors somewhere.
Yeah. And honestly, working with this contractor enough, I can definitively tell you that they will see a second life. They are quite good at salvaging. I'm just being straight with the fact that it likely won't be a benefit to us.
So do you want to talk about that? Okay, fine.
If you want to. Again, it's kind of hard. If you have strong feelings towards the no, that's good to know because then I'll just tell them to stop working on this. But if you're generally receptive to these, we'll keep marching forward.
So are you asking us to approve or deny these change orders tonight?
You can approve them without a price, but if you feel that it's just simply not necessary or valuable to the project.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The next one, which you will see back in front of you because it just impacts too many things, relates to the wainscoting in the second floor. The current project is bid to include wainscoting around the entire perimeter of the assembly area. But what we've discovered, if you can see this, that will be quite difficult to nail to crumbling unstable plaster.
What?
Yep. So there will be a change order once the actual plans and cost estimates are provided to add fraying strips, almost like a fake wall that'll be about a inch and a half out to put the wainscoting on top of it. We discussed other alternatives, frankly, adding fraying strips where there's impact up or down. So that's also something that we're considering right now.
I like that idea.
I like that idea.
So no action on that, but the one thing I'm being more direct with on this one in particular, this will be in front of you again with a tangible change.
I mean, it's kind of like, what, there is no other option. You know, I mean, there's probably a more expensive option maybe, but.
The only other alternative that you would have is ripping off the plaster and just putting sheet rock, which then you'd have two different materials buddying up against each other. And by all accounts, would actually be more expensive than what we're considering with these change orders. And I think the wainscoting, that was something that council brought up as one of the few like plus-it-ups of this project.
Yeah.
Overall, it's a pretty utilitarian space, even when we're done with it, but that wainscoting will be a very nice treatment.
Do they do any sort of insulation or anything?
I was just gonna ask.
There will be added insulation in the attic and they're speculating that that's the single biggest source of heat loss in the entire building. Currently, there's not an ounce of insulation up there. There will not be insulation on the walls themselves, but there is pretty considerable brick, like it's almost a foot thick in most places. And they will be insulating around window jams to seal up some of those spaces.
Would they not consider insulating between the wainscoting and the brick?
They could, but it's going to be pretty minimal R-value for your benefit. But that's something I can certainly follow up with the contractors with.
I mean, it just seems like, might be a missed opportunity if, you're right, if it's not going to provide much.
I'm, I'm curious of the transition look between the wainscoting and the bare brick and just how it's going to tie together because, I mean, I've put wainscoting in a bathroom and it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily work with every, every room that you're in.
Yep. So there's a pretty logical break at the archway itself. Oh, yeah.
There you can see it.
So you'll likely, if you can see my cursor,
Yep.
it'll likely be boxed out right here where the archway was in transition with a, like a finished mill piece right here to the rest of the plain brick. Any other comments or questions?
And we haven't gone as far as to suggest any colors or anything, right? That's.
As far as colors, colors come pretty far down the pike. But the one thing that we have discussed early on is that it will be painted, not like a natural wood tone.
But it's not a pre-finished wain, it's not a pre-finished product that you're going to put on there.
It would be painted, not pre-finished, as far as I understand.
Yep.
Anything else? The next one, flooring. Currently, the project bid includes patching the former bar area right here to match the rubber of the former bar area, and that's it. And again, this is one of those cases where you could say that's job well done right there. But there are some kind of problems with doing just the bare minimum in this case. So far as we've gone through tile selection, the proposed replacement doesn't necessarily match the original. We can't find the original.
This is upstairs, right?
No, this is the first floor, former bar.
Right.
Right where you'd actually belly up to the bar underneath that area. So it'd be a different pattern, it'd be a different color and it'd be a slightly different thickness, but not overly obtrusive. The other issue is the off-sale itself would still retain the VCT tile, which is pretty tattered after fifteen years. But again, right now it just proposes essentially polishing and cleaning. And the last issue is if we do remove the vestibule, there's not flooring underneath it, so you'd have patchwork of flooring underneath the walls itself.
We gotta do, we gotta do that the right way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right now, what we're pricing out is essentially the cost difference between what's in the bid of just patching in the former bar area versus replacing the entire first floor with VCT tile. And that's one of the cases where frankly, the ripout and labor involved is more than the tile itself. If you remember a year or two ago, we did VCT tile in the community room, which is probably twice as big as the space we're talking about here for four grand. So we would anticipate this to be somewhere in the neighborhood of three dollars per square foot installed, which again, would probably put it in the neighborhood of seven to ten thousand dollars for the entire first floor. I'm speaking-
Entire first floor?
Entire first floor. I'm speaking somewhat out of churn because I'm just doing the math based on three dollars a square foot. But that, yeah, essentially for entire new flooring in the first floor.
Is that tile laid right on a thin overlay or is it a thicker, is it the OSB or what is it laying on top of?
The subfloor and almost all of it is some sort of plywood material. You can actually see it here a little bit, which is what's throughout the bars, the plywood and whatever.
Yeah, so, you know, they're not, are they tearing up individual, are they tearing up the tile itself or they're taking up the quarter-inch substrate that's below it?
Just the tile.
Cause if they, if they had to put a new, if they had to put a, if they, if there was an overlay underneath that five-sixteenths or whatever it is, they could zip right down that, cut the sections out right there and it pulls the plywood up and the tile and everything. But if it's on top of five-eighths or three-quarter already and that's, that isn't gonna work.
I'm quite certain it is, but I can follow up with them. I don't know enough, I guess. I was basing it entirely on what I see on that.
Well, I think it would look nicer if the flooring matched.
It would.
I mean, putting all this money into the upstairs and people are gonna walk in, yeah, I mean-
Patch together.
This is a blade work. Yeah, and it's hash work would really be a point though.
I, I, I do not agree with hash work.
I abandoned that black flooring in there anyway.
I don't know why it's there. It's what you see in like gyms and-
Yeah, it's kinda depressing.
Yeah, so we'll keep looking at it until we get a price. I'm glad to see the general consensus is to keep moving forward with it. You would essentially have four different flooring patterns and four thousand square feet, so.
On a project like this.
Kinda minor in the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, it's like carpet remnants.
Good, thank you. The next one, what I consider the fun big one, okay? It has to do with exterior electrical and lighting. To provide a little bit of context, currently, none of this is in the bid scope and that was really intentional. When Aurora and I were working with the architect, we discussed lighting at a fair amount of like intense discussion. And what they were proposing at that time was a ten thousand dollar scope of services to hire a photometric assessment of the building, to do the proper calculations, all this kinda goofy stuff to determine what we'd even have at the end of it. So you'd have ten thousand dollars in planning and they were estimating somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to fifty thousand dollars in actual upgrades. And when we're looking at such a cost-sensitive project, we just said, hell no, we don't wanna address that.
That's the first time you said no to a plan.
I know. Well, it's probably Aurora, fairness. But at least in terms of bid scope, this is not included anywhere, but it is something I think, again, you don't touch this building terribly often with, with this level of scrutiny. I think there are some things that you could go forward with that make more sense than others. And we'll kinda go through the, the needs, the safety and kinda the bells and whistles all in one swoop. So starting outside, I gave a smattering of what you're up against currently. Starting with the top left, that is the door leading up to the second floor. That's a gooseneck lighting or light that does not work, has not worked as far as I've ever been around. In fact, dangling in place. The second one is above the liquor store entrance itself. Again, I've never seen it operate and it's also one of those ungodly sodium bulbs, which they're about fifty to seventy dollars just to replace and I have not seen it work. The last one, which is a little bit harder to see, we spent all this money on a really nice sign, but right now there's conduit with just two bulbs pointing at it that fail to illuminate the entire sign. So I think in the bare minimum-
And that random.
Yeah, and I don't even know why that ornamental one is there, so we've also asked them to remove that. So kinda cleaning up that, making sure that our entrances and signs are properly illuminated was kind of our top priority to look at with this project. The other was exterior outlets. Right now, around the entire building itself, there's like two outlets, which make things like ice makers and Christmas lights almost impossible, if not a fire hazard. So we've priced out exterior GFI outlets as well. So moving down in terms of what this could mean, and there's a giant variation on cost depending on what you have interest in pursuing, kinda taking it top-down, GFI outlets are about three hundred and twenty-five dollars each and at least for estimation purposes, we were methodical to include those with regular kind of intensity around the building. The next, to replace goosenecks at the entrances, I think I'm being a little bit generous, like I don't think it'll be six thousand dollars, but these are rough cost estimates that we've gotten from the electrician to put gooseneck lightings on the entrances and on the signs. The next, one of the goals that we've had dating all the way back to Howard Lake Thrive is to illuminate the cupola, which I think would be a super cool thing moving forward, so we included our price for that. And finally, kinda the cool glitzy thing to do with these sort of buildings is light wash, which is to literally illuminate the exterior surface of the building.
I kinda like that.
I love it.
Oh, I didn't wanna like it, but I do.
Yeah. And so again, the good and bad with this is council, you have a lot of discretion to do anything from zero dollars to kinda what I'm saying is the safety logical thing, which I would anticipate to be somewhere in that ten thousand dollar range. And for a really cool all-in package of light washing, making sure that we have proper GFI outlets, that sort of thing, high-end of about twenty-five thousand dollars. Now again-
So do you try to make those outlets kind of match the exterior of the building or?
It's super hard. I tried to Google what it would likely look like and it's not too different from that. It's, it's a pretty obtrusive box, but why it costs three hundred dollars to put in a single outlet? It's a GFI with a weatherproof box that's drilling through twelve inches of brick. Like there's not conduit connecting them.
But there's nothing worse than wanting to plug something in and not having an outlet. I mean, and you, and you just can't.
Well, there is one thing worse, outlets on the outside of the building with conduit connecting them.
Well, that's-
And what we have now when we put Christmas lights in, I mean, if you walk around by the liquor store, I mean, there's extension cable all over the building to try and plug them in, which I see being a problem particularly around that east entrance because we plug a lot of the extension cords in there. If, as that becomes the handicap entrance, we can't have cords running across the handicap entrance.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good idea. I just was curious if they're gonna look like big ugly black boxes on the front of our nicely renovated historic building.
They will be ugly boxes, they will be about this big. And again, no conduit, they're, the biggest labor component to that is going through that brick.
So there's the goosenecks that you wanna replace, how many are you, is that just over that sign? Is that what you're thinking or the doors too?
So the gooseneck number that you have in front of you provides new gooseneck lighting at the entrances and the signs. So you would have new lighting over the big circle sign on the east side as well as the east entrance, the highway twelve entrance and the west entrance.
So would you consider something more historically accurate than a gooseneck?
That's what I'm looking at, period correct.
Jason's Googling like a madman over there.
So getting to that level, first of all, there's a gooseneck over the second floor entrance right now, which I think is somewhat accurate. I think, like it looks like a very old fixture. The other point is like in terms of approval, what you have in front of us, the fixture itself is relatively cheap. We could bring any sort of samples in front of you for approval, so it's-
What'd you find there, Jason?
Nothing, I was thinking of period correct or something that was more ornate, that even, even instead of having a singular one dead center, what about, you know, something on each side, you know?
Well, I'm even wondering if you did like the light wash, whatever you call that.
And if there's a way to light wash to feature the arch.
Right, like would you have, I mean, how much need would you have for some of that lighting?
So there's two-
Or the doors, obviously, you'd something.
Yeah. Admittedly, if you go forward with more of the light wash, it's gonna be like aesthetic, like to make sure that you're doing something historically accurate because the light wash didn't exist in nineteen oh four, right? So there's the, like the historical accuracy of even the gooseneck lighting or whatever light choice that you decide there. The other is with light wash in particular, typically that turns off at a certain hour of night and you still need the security aspect of the lights. So I would consider doing both regardless. And ultimately with this one, it is a little bit more time-sensitive because a lot of the things that are like leading to be more cost-effective is the fact that the building's ripped open right now. So while you don't have a precise quote in front of you, what I was hoping to get tonight was at least direction and a not-to-exceed amount on a proposed change order.
When, when does it, when does it come to, when, when does a decision made on material selection though for?
On things like actual fixtures, I bet that's a month out.
Okay.
And I, I'm even willing, if you guys, like this is something that I talked about early on in the project, I'm not the finish guy. Like I would love like an ad hoc committee of like a couple of you or just staff, whatever, to weigh in on it.
I, a little, I have a hard time deciding on a not-to-exceed number when you kinda don't know how much anything's gonna cost.
So, so I'll kinda break up, cause what I say on the probable cost estimates on the second slide here, I think, again, to be explicit, included in the bid currently is zero dollars. I think if you were to focus on exterior entrances and lighting up your signs, you'd be looking at about ten thousand dollars. That's goosenecks at the entrances and on the signs. If you go forward with additional things like the cupola and light washing the building, that's where the greater cost impacts come.
I personally think, oh, go ahead.
So how much of the building would you light wash?
Right now, that fifteen thousand dollar figure is all four sides. And that's intentional because you actually have four, three showcase sides. You're coming in from the east, highway twelve is obvious and you have the highway side on the other side. And then just keep in mind, if you do three, are you gonna not do the last two lights at fourteen hundred dollars or whatever?
Part of the back of the building is elevator, you know?
Which all, yeah.
Like you don't really wanna showcase that.
Which is true with one exception. The lake, when you're actually showcasing and you're on the lake, you wanna see a building too. Right now, you actually can't see the building.
So how many lights are you thinking for around?
I think it was a total of ten, I can't remember exactly.
Seems like it should be more, doesn't it?
Yes.
But I suppose if they're, I mean, if they're LEDs and you're not, the purpose of them isn't necessarily to, you know, light up the building like the St. James Steeple, you know?
Yeah.
Is the electricity getting, I mean, is the electrical part of it expensive too to do that? I mean, if we didn't actually install the lights at the moment, we just had everything there so that-
Yeah, so the cost really is in the labor to like electrify the sources for the lights. The light wash fixtures themselves are a little bit more spendy. And mind you, I'm including LED color changing, like as the option, you could literally make the building any color you want. It'd be a little bit cheaper.
Really impressed with the I thirty-five, right?
I really am. So I mean, there's some variation of that, but typically speaking, like if you get that far, you should just, like, the fixture itself is relatively minimal in the scheme of things.
Well, I mean, I think kind of what you see is you get one color LED for, you know, this much and for five percent more, you can get a hundred dollars, I mean, that's kinda the way it goes.
That's what this is, Pete.
I do.
Yeah, so what you'd have in front of you is, it's actually app-based, so it's controlled by like a phone app. And that's regardless of color changing or not, but that's the kinda cool part.
I feel like Aurora's not on board with the LED lighting.
That's not true at all.
And again, the other, the other component, I think where you're kinda headed with it too, Gene, was ongoing operation. The cool thing with converting what we have to LED and installing LEDs where is probably a wash, honestly. LED uses such a fraction amount of energy. Even the four decorative like canteen-style lights that we have on the side are so expensive to change bulbs and to keep on.
Well, I mean, I think the cupola, we'd be foolish to not, for one thing.
And that's, that's the start of the whole thing.
Right, I mean, even when we have that Christmas tree or Christmas lights up there, I mean, even that little bit made such a huge difference that we would be foolish to just not illuminate it somehow. So I mean, I'm a sucker for all of this. Sorry. I'm not a sucker for the price probably.
I, this, I love this, this is-
Where's the money gonna come from?
We have a hundred thousand dollar contingency.
Well, we just spent ten of them.
We spent ten, yes. And there's a couple still in queue. So you're still well within budget even with that, but, I mean, I'm being straight, that, that's contingency.
And how many outlets are you getting for three grand? And all the way around the building, all four sides?
It is all the way around and in fact, in back, there's already a couple. So really, this would be the three show sides.
And what would the, they would be timed, right? So what would the, what would that be set for? The light wash.
Oh. So currently, we have a dusk-to-dawn sensor that is inoperable, but at least that was the intent.
Surprise, surprise.
What? No way.
So I mean, the, what, what pops with light wash is the contrast, I mean, it's dark. It's not dark over there, it's lit.
Yeah, that's true.
It's not as, I, you know, it's not, just doesn't pop out, I mean, when I'm driving by at thirty-five miles an hour and it's already lit, street lamps on and everything. So it's hard for me to visualize exactly what that's gonna look like if it's, I'm a sucker for it too, I think it's beautiful, but-
So on that point, I couldn't find it, but the Howard Lake Community page used to have a picture of this building in the middle of the night and you can barely see any brick. So I think while the streetlights provide some light, it's not illuminating the building in the same fashion that we're looking to accomplish with this lighting. And in fact, even the decorative lights that we have on the side provide almost no illumination whatsoever.
But keep in mind, we're planning on replacing those streetlights sometime in the near future as well, so that'll change.
Those fixtures, how far off are they offset from the wall itself, the building itself? I mean, when we're talking like, uh, record snowfalls and snow removal and bobcats on the sidewalks or?
So most of them do not go on the ground. If you look at the spec down here-
Right, but they're not on the ground, but they're off the wall.
They're off the wall by two and three-quarter inches. It's intentional because you wanna illuminate the wall.
Or a total of seven, seven and a half or whatever it is.
Oh, right, when you include, yeah.
Yeah, so not, not far at all.
So they'd probably be located, middle of the building?
Yeah. Yeah. I only briefly discussed the placement because I didn't know where you guys would land on this, to be honest. But there's a few different opportunities where you can even potentially hide them behind like existing fixtures. And the other point to it is, like, you won't see them because in the scheme of things, they're not that big. Like I'm looking at four inches wide on a-
Right, yeah, I mean, they're not that big.
So really, you want us to give you a not to exceed amount though is what you're looking for?
Potentially-
Not in horrible motion at this point or in the form of motion?
You would make a motion that would set an electrical budget.
Lighting budget.
Mm-hmm.
Exterior. Okay.
And your figure right there is 26.5.
Correct.
And you think you're pretty close?
I try to be on the high side so that when this comes back, it's not 26, it's 22 or 20. You know what I mean? Like I try, like to eliminate the aftershock on it.
All right, I'll go out on a limb and I'll make the motion to not exceed 26.5.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bet you didn't think you were going to get that one.
I did not at all.
I, I mean, it's-
I know.
It's what we're doing.
I know.
When you talk about it, the greater it sounds.
And the thing is, if you want to do it later on down the road, it's probably going to be twice that.
The electrician said that. I mean, like right now, we have the benefit of so many things open and exposed. Plus they're contracted by the like unit prices of the contract, so.
I mean, we should prepare ourselves though for people to be critical of spending that much money on exterior lighting that really doesn't provide a purpose other than looking nice. So just keep that in mind.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. That's our last new business item. All business update, library air quality issue.
Yeah, just a brief update on that. Last week, we did have professional cleaners into the library. They cleaned the carpet, they cleaned the surfaces. The following day, the industrial hygienist that was with us a week or two ago was in to complete additional air and surface tests. We anticipate those results to come back next Wednesday. And as we're talking to Great River, we're trying to line up the opening of the library to coincide with receiving favorable results back. So potentially, we'd be reopening the library late next week.
I, I will say, I think the one, if anything positive came out of this bad thing that happened was, you know, we saw the support for the library with the people that came that night. But, I mean, I've had so many people ask me when I was going to reopen and want to know what's going on and in a positive way that, you know, I kind of think reaffirms that the library is an asset and people need it, people like it and they're going to use it. So I thought we're doing the right thing. All right, administrative report, you have anything to tell us?
I've said enough. Thank you.
Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Your motion is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.